Been here much earlier to extend an apology to them. I think there were some hiccups or miscommunications that have taken place. So we appreciate your patience. We must also start by introducing ourselves. We are from the Portfolio Committee of the National Assembly. On mineral resources and energy. From the far left. We have got Honorable Madogwe. Next to her, we have got Honorable Kula. Next to Honorable Kula, we have got Honorable Volmarans. We have also Honorable Malinga. We have got Honorable Masawle. We have got Honorable Bilangulu. We have got Honorable Maylem. Those are members that are present from the committee. And Mr. Luzi, for the chairperson of the committee. We've got the parliamentary staff. On that side. But also there are some that are here assisting us with interpretation. We are doing these public hearings. I must first start by requesting that we observe all the protocols as far as COVID regulations are concerned. We know we have to have our masks on. We must keep the distance, social distance, the way the chairs are. Remain with them in the manner that they are. We must do all possible. In terms of the protocol. The second thing. Is that we will really appreciate if we can cooperate with one another. We want to attend to as much and as many as possible of all of you here. So we will request that we observe the time given. We go straight to the point. We raise the issues. We are here to listen. We must do everything. There is one thing I was taught from growing. Let's respect each other. We respect each other in such a manner that we cooperate with one another. Because at times we can waste more time on things that may not help us as we go out of this meeting. But we want to listen as much as we can. Those inputs that we'll get from you. Will assist us when we go and engage as a committee. To keep them at the back of our minds. So in essence, we are also here to learn. Because there is no individual who possesses natural wisdom than others. So our being here, it's not only just to listen, but also is to learn. By the time we live here, we must be much more richer by knowledge. So one of the reasons therefore that we are here to learn is that the department came with proposals for amendments on the, on the Act. That is the Gas Act of 2001. One of the things that were identified as witnesses. Was the fact that the Act does not prescribe on transgression of or non-compliance, does not prescribe the sentence. Or the penalties. That is why then we are here so that we can hear from yourselves also on what do you think could be done with regards to the proposed amendments on the bill. In summary, not in total, what the bill and amongst other things it's proposing. Is that for those who are non-compliant. There should be stiff penalties which include. A minimum of 2 million rands per day for a breach of compliance. But also it suggests that there could be a revoking of the license if there is non-compliance. It also seeks to empower the minister. And the energy regulator. To comply against master plan. It also seeks to empower the minister. To make a determination. On, on, on infrastructure and gas, gas and services. It also seeks to empower the minister to do exemption. To safeguard, in relation to safeguarding of national security. Promotion of strategic or economic interest. But most importantly. It seeks to ensure that the industry complies with its obligations, legal obligations. It also seeks to help in protection of health and, health and safety for employees or workers. As well as communities and the environment. We have been trying to make this summary so that there can be a, a understanding. There are two things. You are allowed to reject the proposed amendments. Or to accept the, 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 the suggested amendments. But also you are allowed in the amendments to give what you think it has to be considered. That is the purpose of us being here. So we, we will request that we'll point up, when we point at a person. At least don't exceed five minutes. So that all of us can participate if we all want to speak. We must be fair to the others that also wants to speak. But if we have got enough time again. We will still give people another second chance. Depending on the level of participation. Do you see their chairs here? When we look, take your hands. We will sit according to the numbers you are given. I think, as I've said, that unfortunately we started almost an hour late than what was scheduled as time. Can we then get the hands of those who would want to comment? Number one. Number two. Number three. Number four. Okay. You take number two. Just keep your number, you then count your chairs. Now, number one, Sisi, I think we're number two.
Number two, Sis.
Okay. Is there another hand? Okay. You can go to the mic.
Good morning. So very quickly. My name is Thomas Mgoni. I'm from Middelberg. So, Chair, in a, in a, in a problem, Ugothi, we, we are having a parliamentary committee coming down here to hold a public hearing. Chair, I have a problem that we have a parliamentary committee. When they are doing that, they never follow their own processes. In terms of administrative justice, we've got a clear process. There is a clear process that which stipulates which, which processes we have to follow. The first thing, Chair, eh, the notice was not served in time. In fact, it was not served. I think we can even see, we don't even have municipal officials in this meeting, but it's Malatheni. But we are at Imalatheni. The second aspect is, there was no information whatsoever publicly that people could use so that they can make an informed input into the bill itself. So right now, we are sitting with almost thirty-five pages. Right, right, right now, Makopi, and then yet you guys want us to make a very valid, um, input. We've only received the thirty-five pages. Yesterday and even this morning, as much as parliament tried to facilitate the issue of transport, there were still issues with some logistics. That's why other people ended up coming here at ten o'clock because from the onset, the information we got by Friday was that this meeting is going to take place at one o'clock. And then yesterday late, we were only told that the meeting is going to start at ten o'clock. So I, I don't understand whether facilitation is going to be, issue obtained. So, Chair, given the fact that I think we never had enough time to prepare ourselves, we never had the documentation, not even the library, people never had the documentation. Chair, I would suggest that we call off this hearing and postpone it to a later date and then make sure, Ugothi, people have adequate information, they get that information in time, and then our notices are distributed in all the municipalities. Information must be distributed in all the municipalities. It's, it's one of, even your own conditions to say, if a mine wants to operate, they must put information in a library, they must put information in municipalities. But the very same Portfolio Committee, that has to ensure that happens. So, Chair, in, in very short, I would suggest that we postpone this hearing to a later date and then ensure that people have adequate information, people can prepare themselves so that they come back here and make meaningful input. Thanks.
Protocol observed. My name is Gratitude Moses. Probably be commenting on behalf of the community. I've been going through this, uh, gas amendment bill. I can't understand the plan, the motif of the bill. Going through this amendment bill, to me, it's all about licensing, distribution of gases. But we, we, as the community, we are mostly afflicted by the production of the gases. The infrastructure is collapsing each and every day. People are suffering from sinuses, people are suffering from chronic headaches and other stuff. It doesn't cover the community, the health, the, the, the benefits that the community has. It doesn't. It's not, it's not speaking to the community. It covers you guys as, as, as the government officials. We are not benefiting anything from this amendment bill. This is injustice. So we just, it's just, I, I don't know how many pages are there. It says nothing. It's not speaking to us. It does not cover us. We're not benefiting from this. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mishak Mbagola, National Coordinator of Mining Affected Communities United in Action. Our logo says nothing about us without us. You have done the very same thing where you are doing things without us. Firstly, most of these projects that you are doing affect poor communities. Having this meeting here doesn't make sense. It should be into the people who are affected. And secondly, you should have made aware of communities through local radio, papers, local paper, media and so on, that there's meeting of this nature. This wall should have been full so that people should understand what is happening. Our comrade lady put it very clear, that is, this thing, you yourself didn't write this. Possibly you got a consultant to write for you this thing. And it's possibly a lawyer or something. And you expect us to read this thing and understand it. We're not here to, to tick a box for you to say you have done a job. And right now, after the other speakers, we need to stop this meeting. We want to stop this meeting. Until, until you have decided to make sure that what the process of consulting people is to make sure there's libraries, there's clinics, there's whatever, where you put notices that there's a return of this meeting. You see how Malatheni looks like. You see Pola how it looks like. It's because of mining. They wrote, and we were worried, we didn't want to sign the, the, the register there because down the line, in other meetings, the register has been converted to an agreement to say we have agreed to this nonsense which we didn't even know what is happening here. So stop this meeting and make sure, you cannot give us so many pages and expect us to understand this, what you have here. You get paid for doing wrong things. Stop it.
With Vugani Environmental Justice Movement in Action. My first question, Ugothi, actually, whose gas bill is this?
We have talked a lot as residents of Imalatheni. And when we are raising our concerns as residents of Imalatheni, when we are saying no. We would like to be heard that we are saying no. Even the guest that is being discussed here, we get things sick because of it. That we cannot use because we are sick. We are here in this public hearing. Which it does not help us. As the government, you are only making those. You don't make agreements with us.
Together we can make a difference.
Is it been said that together we can make a difference? But that is not happening. What is most painful? So what are we here for? We don't understand why we're being called here. Because everything that we were supposed to get in time. And understand everything that is being discussed on the deal. We never had that time. What is not right is that you wait for the whole year and not hold this public hearing. Saying only come now at the end of the year. And you must accept that if we are saying no, we are saying no. Please change the way you are doing things. Let us do things in a right way. We are not here to rubber stamp. Amendments that are being proposed on the bill. We do not agree to anything that is being discussed on the bill or proposed on the bill. We are being abused. As the community, we are getting abused. If you can take your time and go around the community. And go around the community before you come here and check the challenges that the community have facing. Our kids are sick. Our kids are dying.
We are not having a good generation that will lead this country.
Because of the things that have been done. We are saying no. You should have come here to discuss things that we, we are demanding as the community. Our constitution stipulates that we've got rights. But we are dying and nothing is being done. So you'll take, just take this bill and take it back and say we did consult the people of Imalatheni. Without our concern.
Let's stop.
So let us stop this.
Let's stop.
Sanbonani, greetings to everyone. Special greetings to Amakombe, Amandla. My name is Gift Hadebe. I'm the branch coordinator of Eguruleni. I'm here because I want to say something that the speaker who gave me a platform to come and stand here said something that does not sit well with me as a young student, as a young person who grows up in places where whatever is happening here is going to happen in the near future. The person who gave me the platform here said things that are proposed in the amendment, who, who, everyone who is here is allowed to propose them or allow. One thing he did not say is that we cannot reject. I have a right to say no to whatever you guys are deciding about this land. I have a right because I, as a young person, I live in this land. If you are going to leave Cracks just like that, I cannot sit and say nothing. Things that are in the amendment, we are allowed to propose or allow. But why are we not allowed to reject? You never said we have, we can reject what you said. So this to me, it basically means you are telling the people that these gas amendments are forced to take place. This raises an awareness to the people that you are going against to say that nothing about us without us. You cannot crack our land without letting us know or without taking permission from us as people who live in this land. So whatever you guys do, ensure that you firstly go to the communities. You hear if the communities agree or disagree to what you guys want to do. I did not know about these gas amendment bill changes or whatever it is. I don't care whatever it is, but if it's going to affect me in the next future, I'm going to stand and fight for it. Amandla.
Okay. But maybe I, I'm calling you some dumb code.
I would like to apologize. Maybe you did not hear me. I heard the interpreter said.
First statement, you are allowed to reject.
I did say that you are allowed to reject. When the interpreter was interpreting.
You are allowed to reject. You can't bring something to people and then you say they cannot. No, you are allowed to reject. So on the amendment, I even added, Ngati, you are allowed also to tell us what more needs to be done. That is, that is the first thing. Now, let me also.
Let me also explain. I understand that there was no proper communication of this meeting. It would be right for us to explain. If, as you are seeing us here in front of you. We are members of the committee from different political departments. We are not the department. There's a difference between the department and parliament. The other speaker said, he was right when he said that this bill was not drafted by us. Come with drafts or proposals. And only the committee will take it to the community. The department is allowed. To say that because we are working with this act. There are some loopholes in this act. And they can't fix those loopholes without going back to parliament. The work of the parliament. It is the responsibility of the parliament to take this bill to the provinces. It happens at times. Between the provinces and municipalities. You find that the communication is not being done well. The problem is that. We cannot. If there are things that are. We are forced to bring this bill forward. We cannot just. It doesn't matter whether it's November or which month of the year, if the, the department is. If the department is saying this is a time for us to... The act should be put forward. But then... If there are no any proposals that are going to be given. We are not like the department. The department, the minister can come to Emalasheni if he wants to. The parliamentary committee will have to agree to go to the public. So these members, as you can see them in front of you, they did not choose to come here. It is them who made the request to come to provinces. And then maybe after this meeting, we are going to Khauteng Province. After Khauteng, we will go to Khauteng. Because we want to go and conduct these public hearings. It happens at times that we are being confused with the department. We are not the Department of Mineral Resources. We are just the portfolio committee of parliament. So it is the duty of the committee to conduct public hearings. So we can see that there was a miscommunication. I wouldn't come here and come and lie to you and say after leaving today, we will come back one other day. We will have to go back to parliament and report. And if they receive our report, they can decide whether we come back or we don't come back. We don't take decisions ourselves with regard to these travelings that we're doing. There are many protocols that we have to follow before we can get to such a decision. Secondly, I need to explain something. When we go to places, we don't choose ourselves. We can't just come to Emalasheni and choose that we want to go to each side. We request the province to give us a place where we can go. It is not our decision. If you can check, there are challenges in provinces. In other provinces, we have not even got places or venues where we can go and conduct these public hearings. We did not choose to come here. It is the province and the municipality. So we cannot say we would have gone to other places. We are only depending. We are depending on the communication that we are getting from the province. I also want to fix this one. There are two differences between the act and to go to the public hearings. We can come here twice if the department wants us to amend maybe three acts. Because maybe the acts will be different. I will not defend... If you are saying you don't want to participate, I also believe that other people are also going to say that. I don't lie to people. When we live here, it will depend on when we deliver our report at parliament. It will depend on what is said after the delivery of the report. I've tried to explain on what these amendments are. And one of the things that is being amended is that those who don't want to do things or who want to comply with the act, it now gives the government an authority to penalize those people. So I cannot say that the meeting must stop unless if other people who want to talk. Unless if there are no people who want to participate. You are being recognized, sir. I've appointed you at first, sir. If you have been given a chance, please give other people who will come maybe during the second round of taking hands. No, you have not recognized me.
Let me greet you everyone. My name is Louvuya Jolobe. I'm born and raised here in Malasheni. It is clear that the Department of Minerals has sent you because it wants more power to control. And I think the community is frustrated to give more power to people who does not do good in the small power that they have. So my concern is that whether we reject or we agree, how do you go to register that? To say this province has rejected, that we must give you power? And then we... Because now it's a... We just want the assurance that for us to account them because now to put them in accountability. We did ask for more power because they're going to do things behind our backs. And it is a bonus in those implementor without anything concerning. For now, we are not benefiting from them. So they are changing. They want more power. Minister wants more power to do, amend things that it might affect us as a community. But in the little power that they have, there's no change in the things that is affecting us. He wants to penalize those companies that are not complying. But you can see in Emalasheni, most like coal, most they are black now owned. So will he able to penalize his own? So maybe that's my fear, Guti. Just to open the community, learn to engage us or do we have any power to say... To Guti, it's not a power now to say, "Learn as a fool".
Do we have power to say we are rejecting this? And how do we register that?
Or this is a process that you hear and then it depends on you guys, on the parliament to say, on your conscience, they have to say, "No, we reject this thing", while we are a member of that particular part. So that's my question, Guti. It's about... To this thing, Guti.
My question, what is our role to all of this? Listen to us?
To vote whatever that you're going to favor us when you reach parliament.
Chair, I do not know through you. Can I apologize, man, with a mask? I don't think I'll be audible. I have flu. So please. Chair, firstly, let's protect the parliament by saying the communique was given to municipalities that are hosting on the 22th of October. This is the letter that we found from the parliament. Maybe the community must maybe get too closer to their municipalities so that they can have access on information. Greetings to the chairperson of the committee and its members. Chair, firstly, I would like to say the bill that the parliament is proposing, that we maybe speak to it. Well, as a community of Emalasheni, we have so many problems, particularly with the table that is seated here on DMRB. We are a community that has so much of mines. I think we've got 50 mines and 20 open cast. We've got more than five power stations in the community. But those state-owned entities are not responding to the challenges of the community. The gas bill, we see that there will be transportation rather than using the pipe that was being used and maintained. I think we have it at Ferro Bank around. Chair, I would like to say you've came here to lobby us to support the bill. We see in paper it's for the people, but practically won't be the people because even the mines are not for the people currently. So we are lobbying the committee to say maybe when you meet with the minister, because I understand, Chair, we are the ears and the eyes of the minister. You should advise him maybe to say, "Minister, where we arrived in Emalasheni, we were bombarded by the community by saying we have more illegal mining that are taking place in Emalasheni that are unsafe, which the minister knows about it. He had many engagements with the community structures. I think even the committee must therefore take into consideration that this town has so many problems. And even if you are introducing this gas amendment bill to us to concur with you or either way, we'll have a problem because in terms of participation, we have off-economic participation and unemployment rate. There will be no change. Lastly, Chair, maybe before I sit down, there is an introduction on IPPs, Chair, independent power producers. I think even the Department of Mineral Resources are the bosses of the IPPs. We want to send a strong message to you, Chair, and the portfolio to say the introduction of the independent power producers will leave this town as a ghost town. Because I guess the Department of Mineral Resources is pushing that we do away with coal and bring other independent producers, systems or like giving people other systems of generating power through the NERSA. So we are saying to you, Chair, please, in bringing the IPPs, please bring back the public participation so that as people, we are not integrated. We had the DG of Department of Mineral Resources and the minister articulating on the IPPs. We see Emalasheni in 15 years to come being a ghost town because there is no proper transition from coal as an energy to another independent power producer. Thank you very much.
Sanbonan.
I greet you.
My brother. Sanbonan. I am part of the community.
I am part of the community. Can we not stop wasting each other's time? Chairperson, I sometimes wonder where you grew up from. Because you are employed. You are employed to help us make our lives better, but you also sell us out.
In order, the consultation is alright.
For those consultations we've done currently, could you please write this in African language? You come here with documents from the lawyers.
Political system as a South African.
You know very well how the African political system is structured.
That is why I'm very disappointed in our government. You know very well, we got older people who are illiterate. But it's just consulting.
But you are consulting us in English. Go and write this in my language that I will understand. If there are municipal officials in this room... It's not the committee's duty to go to the polls. They must come to our people as they have brought this gas to our people.
You need to come to the people and make them understand what is in it for them. Because it's only for the capitalist.
We have people can make this gas for us. And we do not want this gas because it's not going to be beneficial to us. We beg you. As a community, please go back and find a better way to communicate with us because this does not work.
Good morning. My name is Bolim Mango from Eguruleni. I am here representing women from Wamua. We are facing a very difficult time. As they were from Witbank and other areas, these mines are really causing problems in our lives. The previous speaker asked you where you grew up. Parliament sends you. And now you are here in town. You are supposed to go to a township and know what is going on. You are here with this document. I'm since six years old and I cannot understand what am I going to do with this? Where are white people here? So if you are just five and you came here just for yourself because these documents are there in the table. You are here protecting yourselves. What about us? What about these able children because of the mines? Please listen to us as the women. There is no white lace curtain in Witbank because... Because this dirty message comes out from the coal. We don't have clean things on Sunday. People are in churches on Sunday. You mustn't just come here and say that we've been sent. We are also sending you. Go and tell your people. Do the right thing for us. Please change and let your conscious speak. There is no money for transalts. People are not working. They want to come here, but they can't because they don't work. I wish I could sit here so you can just read a document for me so it can be interpreted to me so I can understand this document. Black people, let us be faithful to each other. Please do not sell us out. I am here representing my children and my grandchildren so that you can fix this. I don't want them to face the same problems that I faced. Please do things better. Please do better as a black nation.
Sanbonan, Sanbonan.
I greet you all. My name is Mathieu Bongkos. From Xanaa region.
Sometimes we go to the end of the line because guys, you know, you're not doing it. And the message, you're not doing it 100% sure.
Why we are here? Why it's painful? The problem is that we are here today, but then the message... The problem is that we are here today, but then the message... We are here today and it's quite painful that you have been sent. And you are here. I'm not sure if you are going to deliver the message correctly, but the community is here to listen to what you have to say. But we are not sure if you'll deliver the message. And why are those who have sent you not here to listen to what we are saying? Because you will not be able to convey the pain that we as the community are facing. Unga kobek.
Hundred percent shock, uki beka nihambisa la, uktanda ina kona.
I'm not sure if the one that has sent you, if it's the municipality or another organization or department. I'm sure they took you to where they wanted you to go.
Omama nganhambisa around Imalalini.
If they can take you around Imalalini.
Isma anesoto ninasbona.
You'll be surprised. There are lots of holes and your vehicle won't even be able to pass there. You say you want to promote gas. We have our own gas. The municipality is helping us promote. The dustbins are not being collected all around. That air is disturbing us as a community. The mines that are surrounding us are affecting us as a community. And at the end, as a community, we are not receiving anything. There are no jobs, no water. Electricity. It's very expensive. It's like from other countries.
So benkeela uki ndiobe nsuka niti niyahamba. Namtslaanji, logo niti nizenga uki, tinasu mpakati, city no, asifuni. Hambani ni Olanda, labantu, babu yebona, bazozimela, lapambu kweitu, no ma base, le, lestala kona.
We are begging you. As the community. As the community, we are saying no to this bill. We do not want it. Go and get those people who sent you to come here themselves. You are here. You are not among the actual community. Our grandparents are not here. Our grandparents are not here. We had to pay for transport to get here, using our own money when we are unemployed. Thank you.
Sanbonan.
I greet you. My name is Sabelomguni.
We are from Gomakua.
From Gomakua.
I would like to speak to this bill, but basically I want to pose a general question to everyone of you. When in your own perspective, what do you think? I haven't heard any speaker saying what is their opinion around this bill. But you want the opinion from us, but I will request you, after everyone, maybe one of you, just to tell us generally what do you think about this bill? So my question, it's not my question, it's a question in particular, it's a content. You see, when it comes to legislation in South Africa, it always give power to one person. One person. NPRDA gives power to Kudimanthasi or let him say, let him say the minister. The minister to make decisions that affect us as communities, given power by NPRDA. The same document that we are proposing, is proposing the same thing, to give Kudimanthasi, the minister, more power to make decisions on behalf of. You see that we fight against or we agree or disagree, but it's always his power based on the legislation of South Africa that empowers him to make decisions. Let's go to this bill, just a little bit. It gives the minister the power to establish the gas regulators team. Am I correct, right? According to the bill. It gives the minister that power. No one else can appoint a regulator or dismiss a regulator, only the minister. And we know the minister is a political aide that represent a section faction of the whole South Africa, not the minister of the people. It's a political aide, again, the system of South Africa. It only empowers one person. So if we are saying according to regulation, the minister has the power to put his friends... How many cases do we have as communities against Kudimanthasi for making wrong decisions? Empowered by NPRDA. Okay, now we are bringing this case, regulations to empower the same person. Leadership, come on. The democratic country, malai regulation speaks the other way. Regulation always empowers one person. So I mean, I'm saying this bill should be scrapped, starting with NPRDA. We need a regulation that will regulate, like where everyone will be consulted according. Free prior informed consent. Give us information before we can comment. Preo. I heard one leader said, "This communication was given on the twenty-second of October to the municipalities." Again, deployment, a problem. We have a problem of deployment in communities because political aids, system of South Africa came. So according to this bill, as exploration of land, the gas regulator has the right to expropriate land without anything. And if, according to this bill again, if the regulator feels like or seems like we as communities, we are denying right to access to the applicant. So they have a right to take our land without our consent, as per this bill. The only consultation or the only legislation that allows, public consultation or... Yeah, let's say public consultation. Blasphemy like this is NEMA, NEMA, Environmental Management Act. That's the only legislation. And when you go through this document again, there's nowhere where it refers to NEMA as part of consultation with the communities. But you want us to pass this bill, leadership. I don't know, maybe we read the comments in a different way or with the understanding of the document we receive. The legislation of South Africa doesn't favor us, but you're bringing something okay. So this document will allow the minister or the regulator to take our land without our consent if we say it should pass. Who protect us? As communities. Let's scrap this deal, this bill. This bill is there to further impoverishes us. It's there to marginalize us as we are already marginalized. There's no compliance. Don't say you are bringing this bill. No, man. You understand? Don't say we are bringing this bill to safeguard. Safeguard who? Who's interest? It's umtsaba, unga chahtwa, if the applicant, are you told umtsaba, go on.
I have a big problem with the land application bill. Chairperson.
No, sorry, sorry, with respect, with respect. Because we are distracting the train of thought. Na kulum, ya kulum, ya kulum, ya kulum. As I was saying, thanks, 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 Chair. Askiswena mama ne, ganga mina nguktelela, askiswena mama. As I'm saying, leadership. Ask, 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 see, see, ma, ma, si se khalen, ma so kulumana bantu. Niangiza uki tingtin, nangnaito li kezo funera, la, ningswaga. Ma so kulum. Official language is kulumai. If you are saying you're going to draft a regulation or wanted document that will safeguard exploration of the gas or any mineral in South Africa, do it with us. Don't only give us NEMA, NEMA, NEMA as a regulation to protect us. NPRDA doesn't protect anyone. This one also will never protect anyone. Tinala, savauta, man is where my elections is in the gasele. But then a communication ifigayo. Ubo, nina, ezama, ama, 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 diployes, uki nizo, nizo, represent. Asilunhan, we are fighting the system that is against the black person. We are fighting the system that is against mining affected communities. That's the system we are fighting. Unfortunately, you are in front of us. So Solanan, to take the message back to the people, la, beban tumi, leadership, aman.
I want, uh, leadership.
Imam Domko. Imam Domko. Angitutari national leader. National leader.
Yes, sing is true, national leader.
Yes, trelo kusale panzri, Domko. Unendengai fundis. En xilumanga alalan. Ra fundis, ndioye odo. Edungusale ngibambili, no ma ngufumela naau. But indokto inchonepo ngai fundis. Kuni pumuni umundu. Na, ngixilo, we nusela payani. Da sangitu ilida. Mu ilida, ndioba, ba, ba, na, na, me, gi, ipuyweli, privilege, ane, ngani, uki ba, ilida, manje. O ma kota, gi iti, na, yinle. Banenlela bazongo, nisangaayo. Manje, minangazo, tumunguslanu, no mu umundu, suguma, ngobukonziwe. Na mu iliduz, osuguuma. Ngapalu tinchosa yakoe, nini. Angizuk ngixituba, kota, ngixilo, angxongo, kakaani. Ngatuma, saibekona, banya, bantu. O ma benge, yakon, gi zobue, ela, kula, bebe, be, negaze, wekala. Manje, bani nga, bani, benka, tenbafala, ndiobe, aikse, uzukulmele, uzupindubuwe. Ngakala, kenkokele, uben kokele, ngakala. Uben kokele. So that uma spuma laana, no ma sifumelaani, koda, spumas, sinokshunpana. Uki ngombo no wako, no ma, angutandu, shokanzima, na, lakminemziben, kotoa. Ngiazu, uki, bunga fanele verse, uchi ndiofunoa imina, netandua imina. So, zaykala, zelodonada, ngaknekeza, the platform. Ngakala, munda, besa, kulumele, akhe, ame, sinigese, nabanyu. So, ipen... Ez nizi, da susuzpendul, pati, ngangxesheshen, lu, nisidengani. Asikato, trisili komedi. Si sahamba, siya, ez ndaweni, si okuzwa, izi, vosabantu, ziti. Ngiteo ma nkaza, ngatsi, zintanga, nesa, shuke, nindioba, sela. Ngageke, status, senkati, sen, angmazo, munye, ukabanga, ninketanga, nene, akwe, no munye, angmazo, ukabanga. Sebe yo, tumabe fika, se sihambe, yonke, onkama provinces. Bazoo, koka, uki, Emalalini, for instance, wa tiwa. Endaweni tiso, wa tiwa, yakoka, yonke, low report. Ishanga nisu. Koda, izo ba, report, ya, Semalalini, peela. Kuzo ba, y report, ya, all over, all the nine provinces, depending endaweni, siya, gozo. So, so, angwasupanda, lama members, manje, as if, abana, opinioniabo. After Imam Domko. Angitutari, angitubutari, angitutari, utari, angitutari, uzi, general question, tinasong. But ubo, ubo, ubozela, anumbozo, ngalela, ubo, ubo, ngasmes, ubo, nganga, abe, ubo, uboza, ufunuka, funu, pendula, roshi. Kenu ngapendula, ngangwiya, ngangzupendula. Kenu ngapendula. No, kenu ngapendula, uka, ubozo, umbozo, ubozo. Ka, ngatini zopo, kumsanganu, kemanje. No, intoso yenu. Ya, bon, umbozo, to share a chair meeting, explaina, izi, ndobe, shunga, bantu. Ubo, sutimakatulu, tutimakatula, ubaniwena. Please, ngite, kelasunpan. Kelasunpan. It's, was, Imam Domko.
All right. I want, I want call you. Comrade, amanza. Comrade. If, 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 sebana, meeting, nganji. Uki, abantu, snayanza, nganjani, uki, batoli, misabenzie. Snayanza, nganjani, uki, abantu, batoli, amanza, kini. Snayanza, nganjani, uki, abantu, batoli, izi.
In meetings such as this, we need to get information on how we can help people to get clean water and to get the resources that they need.
But, asifuni, meeting, we pay, nizo, funu, uki, nigeze, abantu, bena, ama, tenda, waleke, se, funagenzie.
But we do not want meetings where you are going to have means or get ways to give your people tenders so that they can make these gases. Let's address the issue of poverty that we are dealing with, with the townships.
This case won't address in the way in can. Go, 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 kina, let me tell you. I hate dealing nama messengers. Ya, bona, you are messengers, ni itunye. And that's a problem. Uki, intaso, you go all the provinces before they tell the decision makers what is happening. All right, comrade. Look, dala, lento, uki, tina, see, leadership, start a matter, decision, start a, you've made decision, tina. Uki, you're gonna say no to this.
The commander is correct when he says that we, as the leadership, are making decisions.
And you, as the messengers, you're still gonna go back and tell those who have made this unfair law, uki, but I want to know, after six months?
And you are only going to hope and tell them that people are saying no after six months?
Manje, city, meeting, I pay the end, you don't go to Hauteing. Ngobe Hauteing, na kona, saba, score.
We are saying that this meeting must come to an end and you will not go to Hauteing because we will be there as well in Hauteing.
Pinda, forty, when it's, when it's, when it's, when it's messenger, kule, meeting.
You must never, ever send mess, or should you ever send messengers to these meetings? We're gonna have a big problem.
Okay, uko no munye? Okay, is Imam Domko. Ubo pakam, see. Oze mva wak.
I greet you all.
Nkabangutinki, nesina, yewa.
I think our big problem is, we only have one problem. We did not get a proper explanation of what this bill is about. The bill has been written and now it's being amended and it has to do with those people who work with gases. We have various companies here, the big ones and the small ones, the other ones that are producing, like the power stations and stuff. I think you need to explain who this bill covers, whether it's the distributors or the wholesalers and the producers. And also the issue of radical... People who are part of the record transformation, like us as wholesalers. If you can explain how we are going to be impacted by this bill, how we are going to be affected with regards to selling the gas. Because the other thing that have been spoken here have nothing to do with this bill.
Lochan. Yeah, oh, kulmago, ngu, ngu, ba, Malovola.
Greetings. My name is Mr. Malovola.
Yeah, ngi, ngi, zela, ngi, zogielelisa, mina.
I'm here to advise.
Ntilo, ngatiz, i, isome, tinolenge, kulmago.
I foresee that you will have a problem. What I'm saying is that I'm here to advise. Indo yoktom. The first thing. Nizela. You came here. Evandui, nivala. To the people of the Malalini. In this area that you don't know. Unless that you speak to the people who belong to this place to tell them what you came here for. When they started singing outside.
You know, I'm, do, I'm, last, Pumile, so, I'm, I'm.
They, we, the people of this place, we saw that these people do not belong to this place.
And then, we, 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 we.
And you heard that they are not from here, Emalashen. Places that we don't know, places where we will never go to. So I'm advising you.
Come, but, I'm, I'm, I'm.
We, when we are going to Hauteing. Speak to the people of Hauteing first. That we are coming to you, who are we? We want a protection from you.
Who, who, what, I'm, 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 I'm.
There's only one that I, one person that I know who has a, a license for, oh.
Eh, in, 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 Brazil.
To deal with gases.
I, 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 I.
There are only two that I know. It, it is this gentleman here.
I'm, 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 I'm. And I'm, 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 I'm.
And also this other one here.
You know, you know, councilor, la.
There's a counselor here.
Yeah, and I think, it's an outgoing counselor, she's an outgoing counselor, I'm not positive. The rest, about, I'm, 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 I'm.
And the rest of the people are not from here.
Yeah, Nellie, Lisa.
So I'm advising you. When you leave here and go to Hauteing. Sit down first. Then talk to the people of Hauteing.
Good, I'm, 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 I'm.
The ladies that are in front there. When people are on the desk. And say that people have not been recognized, you are making people to fight.
Eh, 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 I'm, 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 I'm.
Step person.
This, I'm, do, I'm, 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 I'm.
Let people talk.
But, I'm, 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 I'm.
When they've talked to them.
I'm, 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 I'm. I'm, 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 I'm. I'm, 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 I'm.
There was a guy next to me.
I'm, 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 I'm.
There was a guy talking cheap and then next to me. And I could see that this guy is not from this province and we have called them to.
I'm, 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 I'm. Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm.
I can see that guy was taking some minutes.
My, I'm, 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 I'm.
But the one who, eh, who moved the people or who said people must move.
I'm, 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 I'm.
Let people talk.
I'm, 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 I'm.
Those who are taking minutes for you.
Yeah, Nellie, Lisa.
I'm advising you.
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm.
Go to the people first.
Oh, no, I'm, 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 I'm.
Before you do such things.
Oh, who's it, in a, so, I'm, 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 I'm.
So that we.
No, let's, it, oh, yeah, I'm, 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 I'm.
We knew on Friday that there's a meeting here.
My, I'm, 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 I'm.
We did not even see in which area we were supposed to meet.
But it's eh, eh.
They said eh, it is one of their halls here in town.
A banquet hall.
They said it's a banquet hall. So we were then asking to which venue were we actually going to. So you must look at those logistics.
Yeah, but, this, this, and, 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 and.
And one thing that I want to mention, we were here.
I'm, 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 I'm. I'm, 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 I'm.
If you have managed to start that, eh. These people have not been able to. Do this, whatever they did here, you've called us.
Never, never, I, never, I, reinforce, I'm, 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 I'm.
If they can come with a, a reinforcement, what are they going to do? You gave them an hour for them to hear you. If it's four o'clock, let four o'clock be four o'clock. If there's one person, you can start the, the process. Thank you.
Sanbonan.
Greetings.
Eh, oh, my, I'm, 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 I'm.
My name is Mbo Nimalaza.
Eh, I represent a structure, it's with an environmental and waste management committee.
Representing a structure.
Eh, I'm, 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 I'm.
I have a request.
It's bad, it's bad, it's bad.
We are people, we are the government.
I'm, 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 I'm.
Let us be truthful.
This document should have been given to us prior this day, like, we can't go through this document like today and even amend right now because it's an amendment bill. As if it's an amendment, then you must give us this document before this event, when we come here, we come, this is, nama inputs already. But now you are doing a numbers game, what you are doing. This is a numbers game, statistics, says, for me. By signing the attendance register, everything.
We have signed the attendance register.
All agreed to what has, what, what, what have we agreed to? You see how painful it is? We've agreed to something that we didn't, we, we, I can't go through this document. They, they gave, gave me, it's not the pamphlet. The serious document is going to affect the, the rest of my life, I'm going to be affected by those amendments. That, 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 I was, I, I, by my signature, I'm included just by my signature only. Eh, you, you are, we are really taking statistics, you sign attendance register, even taking data and everything. Guys, please, be fair, this process must start again. This document, we must go through this document before we agree. Now, we are, we are, we are, it's for me, it's for me, saying, I'm done.
You are now making us to agree to.
I understand, the hands, Paul.
To these amendments.
We are, we are, we are advancing and enhancing, I'm a companies, we're balloon. Yeah, but, whoever's space in, so, yes.
And we are now promoting.
When, when we're talking about, yes, even, whoever's space, you never, me, they are.
It is only white companies who are doing gases and they are not here. They are not here.
I'm, 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 I'm.
They are making money. It is us who are agreeing or making endorsements today, amendment.
Must start again. That is my humble request, must go through this document. See, I should, oh, to say, I'm, 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 I'm. We must have input, we, we know how to input into, into documents. Because now says for me, but now I'm asking if it can happen. It's not any chance, for the document.
Give us a chance to go through the document and come back.
I'm, 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 I'm.
If you don't come back, I, I don't know.
He requests, yeah.
That's my request.
Thank, thank you very much eh, to the parliament, eh, the portfolio committee from the D M R E. In front of you here, it's Lucky Bafana, Lukele. I'm from Bangala Chamber of Commission Industry. I'm also running a company called K P E Petroleum, which have got a wholesale license dated 2010. Um, the first thing that I would like to align here is that we saw a poor communication between the local municipality and, and, and the national. Because when we touch base with the mayor, the previous mayor said, whom are they communicating with because we don't have an office now. Uh, our term is exhausted, so they were not even aware, some of them, that there was going to be such a caliper of a ceremony that's gonna take place today. And then the second one is that the, 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 the alignment of candidates to participate, as my previous colleague stated, that it was very much imperative that it, it should have been controlled, highly so, because you find wrong people who are not from Emalashen, who came here and want to disrupt. We want to listen to the bill, even if there was no proper communication and guidelines to the communities at the ground. But we feel like that should you come back again, have a program or a system on how you're gonna touch base to the real commuters of Emalashen. And then the other one, are there any gas reserves in, in Pumalanga, in Malalashen? Since you, the first two preferred places was Nellis, Brent and Malalashen. Where does mine taking place? We are clueless, we don't know what is happening. You are here, but we feel like there's not transparent communication and guidelines given to us as stakeholders and communities. So we want to know such things as, are there any reserves? So that when there are reserves, people should be taken for trainings, workshops. So they are prepared, they are prepared before this bill is put into action because we are worried that if there are reserves and they are being hidden, then we are fighting and losing battles at communities. The same thing that happened to the coal industry, where you found companies from Australia and other places, they've already taken part, they've already taken everything from our land. Then we're gonna have a starving nation that's going to go to bed with an empty stomach as it's happening now already with the coal reserves, where you found red tapes are also being now put in place. So we would really appreciate it that as the portfolio committee, look at those aspects, try to develop systems that will touch people on the ground. And then, are there any plans for existing wholesalers? As my colleague said it, I would like to put an expansion on that one. So that we will tell you why we want that to happen. We've got wholesale license holders in Pumalanga that are still poor. Like I said, some of us, we've got licenses 2010, there's projects. You found green filling station projects that we have, that never touched base, even the office of the D M R E for any regulations to be passed on them. We've got beautiful projects that we would love to show you, Chaperson, before you leave, so that you see that we've got commuters in Malalashen who are business people, who are ready to work with the government and feed their families. And then, we wanted to know, how are you gonna align trainings? Because in gas, I think there's upper stream, midstream and lower stream, which means if those three parts are there, that means there's more opportunities, especially the black starving communities. So we want to know, how are you planning to make sure that those aspects are touched base and they also gonna reach communities who are in business and also interested in employment? The last point, how are you gonna make sure that funding reaches those people within the gas industry that you want to bring as a bill? Because we can see that you talk about all the policies and prospects here, but all the time you leave funding. Funding must be a priority as well, giving us, how are we gonna align ourselves to the funding? That's not gonna even every tapes involving the banking sector that is closing the doors, that is still having consultants that are white, even when it comes to these things that they favor them. So we would like your involvement to be profound on this one. I thank you.
I'm back again. Okay. Now, specifically your documentation here. I address the plan. I address the motive why we are integrating. Ne? Uh, there are no monitoring techniques here. So it does not cover the health and safety in regards of lifeblood of communities that are affected. I address the effect that it will have abandoning the community. You don't address skills and development plan that comes with the amendment of gas. Who's benefiting? I, Kolumina. Who are going to be the stakeholders for a community? It does not address that. It does not address and eh, 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 include the community. Please go and, and, and redo this thing. It's not speaking to the community. I would reject it on behalf of the community of Emalashen. Thank you.
I'm greeting you all. My name is Tembilu Beesli. I'm staying here in Malalashen in White Seven. And so, my, I'm, I'm. What I'm standing up here for. But, Kolumile, so, I'm, I'm, I'm. The people have spoken, we heard them and they are telling the truth. I'm, 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 I'm. It is like now, we're here in the Emalashen municipality. We are a community. We are a community. And the municipality. The municipality. Oh, the government or the province. I'm, 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 I'm. It was not, these structures were not going to be there without us. So, it, I, 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 I. So everything that is brought to the public, it should be, start somewhere, be, eh, to be discussed. But, about to, I, 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 I. But the people who should be considered is the community. Because, I'm, 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 I'm. It's like you can't go to someone's household. I'm, 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 I'm. Without consulting the head of the family, maybe. So, it, I, 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 I. What I'm saying is that. The government, I'm, 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 I'm. The government must do this in a right way. So, I'm, 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 I'm. We've got words in our communities. So, I'm, 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 I'm. We've got counselors. I'm, 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 I'm. It should start there, the counselors should call the community meetings. But, but, Kolumen, I'm, 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 I'm. And talk to the community and inform them about such things. I'm, 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 I'm. Through a word committee or the public structures that are there. Because, man, just, I. Because now we are here. I, 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 I. The community is not here. The community, eh, so, I'm, 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 I'm. In the community, we've got learned people. I'm, 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 I'm. Those who are not learned. I'm, 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 I'm. Those who are in the middle. I'm, 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 I'm. Some they don't understand the case. I'm, 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 I'm. I'm, 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 I'm. I'm, 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 I'm. I'm, 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 I'm. I'm, 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 I'm. All those things should be explained to the people. I'm, 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 I'm. There are elderly people who are staying alone. Who's gonna help them? Governors overseas. Yes, or isn't, I'm, 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 I'm. These are the things that we should consider. I'm, 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 I'm. Now the amendments are being proposed. So, it is, it is, I'm, 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 I'm. It means some, most of the things have been concluded. It, I, 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 I. What is just wanted, it's. Just in, for, I'm, 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 I'm. You just want inputs eh, from the people. But, I'm, 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 I'm. The very same people who are absent here. So, it, I, 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 I. So what we are requesting is that this communication should start in the community. And I, I'm, 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 I'm. Be given enough time so that the community can have enough time to discuss such documents. Yeah, I, 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 I. So that everybody can understand. As understanding, I'm, 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 I'm. Because we don't understand things equally or the same way. So, so, I'm, 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 I'm. So we request that when you go back. Consider, eh, 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 eh. Consider the community first. I'm, 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 I'm. Don't just talk to the municipality. So, it's, I'm, 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 I'm. And you think that we have communicated with everybody.
Please do it in the right way. Because these things cannot be eh, eh, there without the community, thank you very much.
My name is Ledisembe Keni, I'm a former counselor of Wotseben. I'm so worried, uko boni, Emalaleni, man pegala, is only Wotseben and Wotseben, almost, it's Wotseben and Wotseben. I'm so worried, uki, kuleso, Emalaleni, nasitroye, langin, bilwese, Emalaleni, we're supposed to be full, we've got thirty-four wards, Emalaleni. The issue, eh, eh, gases, I need, si, eh, si, eh, kela, the development.
We need a gas, in fact, we are asking for this development. We are asking for this development, but the way in which it was done, it was done in a very wrong way, there is no information. I heard eh, the gentleman says eh. That it would have to be taken back to the parliament and eh, they should be informed that it did not go well in Emalaleni.
Si, kela, maybe next Friday, or maybe Thursday, Tuesday, like, si, filipindi, buyle, back to Emalaleni.
You know, if we could, and if eh, it was to be done in the way that we want it to be done, we would eh, set a day and say that eh, in a, or on a particular day, it should come back to Emalaleni. Things are not done the way we want them to be done, so they will have to come back to Emalaleni. I'm apologetic of what has happened here today, you know, here in Emalaleni, we don't do such. Eh, the thing that has been done by people from other places, people from Jobek and Krill and wherever, you know, we do have such incidents here, but we do them orderly.
So I don't know, uki, eh, communication, yenzeganja, ni, kela, kela, guys.
What worries me the most is that eh, we do not have our leadership here, there are only few eh, people who are in the leadership, so I'm really begging you that eh, next time you do this, in fact, it should be done in a way that eh, people get informed prior. Greetings. I apologize for eh, the noise, the incident that happened, we do not behave in that way here in Emalaleni. Eh, la, ma, la, sheela. Oh, ma, sheela, from Wotseben? I came here today to just eh, give you my views. Well, we're here for eh, the gas issues, but we are also asking that you should do things for us and eh, should do them in the right way. Eh, there's too many of us as residents here in Emalaleni. But today I can see that eh, there's very few of us. A lot of residents, including the elders, really need eh, that opportunity to can speak for themselves. Because there's a lot that we need from you. Eh, there's a lot that we would like to ask from you. Now eh, I am asking that before you can come and maybe sort out this issue that's about gas. I'm asking that you should first inform the community. The community should also have its own eh, views. Just as we are here as well. And I'm asking that eh, before you can do what you wish to do. I also hope that we will also eh, benefit somewhere. But currently, ourselves as the residents of Amalaleni, we are very sickly people, we have sinuses and different kind of diseases.
So, the project, eh, is, eh, I think it's also, eh, somewhere.
But eh, the project that you are coming up with, I, I think it is going to be very beneficial to us. Yes eh, I'm speaking for myself, not eh, on behalf of the community. I stay in a shack. And I'm not eh, staying there comfortably, I do not even have the gas that you are talking about. Eh, actually, asking that you should eh, but, nungisela, ini? Yes eh, come and help us in eh, the shacks where we stay. We do not have toilets. No streets. We do not even have water. Even the gas, because without that gas, there's actually no life on earth. I have children. And they are studying. They are using a candle. I'm unemployed, so I'm even unable to, can even afford to buy that candle. I have a child who's mute. No eh, can't even allow eh, that child to use that pit toilet, because I'm scared that eh, the child might fall into the pit. Eh, I can't even eh, afford to buy nappies. Because I'm unemployed. Because there are no jobs.